As well as Barbara Chow and Chris Shear, who are the Hewlett Packard reps. To say that they were very highly impressed with your outstanding work and dedication to the kids in your schools and districts, as well as to the PACE effort. The teacher dedication and ownership of the system was astounding to them, something that they often see in the charter schools only. They'd come hoping to see a new way of assessment and accountability for the future of public education in America, and they each stated their hope and expectations were fulfilled. Thanks again for your tremendous planning and support of the visit. You made us all proud. And I share that as a testament to the entire SAU 39 and the work done, and specifically the work that the PACE Initiative has created the last couple of years. We are now being recognized at state and national level for some of the work that we're doing. And it's part thank you on the school's behalf for being supported by the board and the community on that. So I did want to take some time to highlight the PACE visit. The other areas, Department Growth Plans I just mentioned, I would share in template. I hope you were able to see that template. And Phase One of the drafts are completed, and Phase Two will begin, and we'll share the Phase Two templates as they roll out.
Can I ask Rob, is that, I looked at that, is that a one-year plan? Like the goals and what they need, you know, from administration to meet those? Is that a one-year plan, or is it sometimes two- or three-year goals?
It'll probably be, you know, a two-year, year and a half. You'll notice on the template, there's a milestone section where they'll, excuse me, after, probably before the beginning of the year, indicate when certain things will be finished. It's somewhat an agile project plan, so we'll set dates, and they might move sooner or later depending on the work. But you can probably see that more in the context of a two-year, two-year plan, where some of the things being finished by the end of this year in the summer.
Thanks.
Is this professional growth? Is this professional growth, Rob, or why don't?
No, what we did, David, is we asked all the departments to come up with a Department Growth Plan, and we modeled it on the template of our new Teacher Leader Effectiveness Individual Growth Plan. So every department has put together a growth plan for the next, you know, year to two years.
So it is professional growth?
Like department, yeah, it's like departmental strategic planning, yeah.
Okay. And within that, there might be some targeted professional growth for individuals, but it's, you know, every department, we wanted to establish a plan for where they're heading and how we're going to evolve.
There's a link in Rob's principal's report, so that would give you more information.
Okay.
And under Teacher Leader Effectiveness, just a quick update about Stages. I hope that link worked, and Stages has already gotten some positive reviews by both staff and the leadership team who are using it. And what it just moves, it moves what has been pen and paper for years to, you know, a web-based and an electronic system to automate our staff observations. And it does a great job of collecting the information, updates, and it's really, really already paid some dividends in the efficiency. So I wanted to share with you that link, so you could explore that a little bit. I also wanted to highlight that another phase of Teacher Leader Effectiveness is student surveys being part of the observation, and so we're excited about that. Really preliminary stages, and we'll have more to share later. And Christine has been really, really helpful in getting that off the ground, and we have a new tool for that as well. But we're in the very early stages of that, so I wanted to highlight its beginning, but we'll be able to give you some more information as we start engaging in that process of students being part of, or student surveys being used as part of the observation. And again, happy to take questions, but I did want to mention Steve visited my office today to make sure the principal's report would be finished in a timely manner, so. I don't know if I said he mentioned me now, and gave me a little shakedown.
He asked to sit there.
He said, "It's great reading, but not fantastic listening."
He said lecture, lecture material.
Right, right. So, very excited about, oh, and like included the Word Language. I know we had spoken about that, just as an example of one of the departments doing some fantastic work. And so the Word Language Department continues its work in developing competencies and exploring instructional methods to meet student need, as well as inform our work in redesigning the program of studies. So the Word Language Department has worked on what their competency is going to be, more of a proficiency-based model, and we really think that what they'll be able to come up with is an answer to some of the issues we're dealing with, with what we can offer, you know, Spanish one through five. Can we offer that in the existing model? Possibly not, but in a competency proficiency-based, you're folding things in and the curriculum can be redesigned. So they might be one of the first departments that models that kind of efficiency, where in a competency-based model, you can provide a really robust program of studies at no additional staff or, you know, additional other resources needed. So I just wanted to tease out the very beginning of that work, and once they finalize Phase Two of the Growth Plan, I'd be happy to share that electronically as well. But I thought it was important to bring that up, because we know we're, in all sorts of areas, looking to really offer a student experience that doesn't prevent anybody's needs from being met, but we are coming up against, in current model, how we can do that. So we're looking at instruction, and we're looking at the competency-based approach as an answer to that. So, the other thing I want to mention is just our healthy connections. Again, we're using data to inform us on where students need education in areas, and Peter, John Young, Karen, Officer Smith have been instrumental in developing healthy connections, and the juniors and seniors will be participating in one, I believe, Thursday, when we get back around drug abuse, specifically epidemic in, you know, probably the last couple of years, and unfortunately locally as well, in the opiates and heroin and prescription pills, et cetera. So we'll have a healthy connection on November 12th. The leave totals, you requested I bring those to your attention, and I attached, but I'm not sure if that link worked, so I'll reattach that.
Yeah, that was the only link that didn't work.
I'll reattach that, and basically what you would have seen is just a summary that a percent of our out-of-class time is really in PD, Professional Development. The good news, we think, is when you look at that, the percent of time where a substitution, a substitute is needed is minimal, because we're asking folks, especially with the in-house Professional Development, let's arrange it when a majority of people don't have classes. So I'll reattach that. But analysis of it is, we're trying to minimize out-of-class time. The majority of the out-of-class time was in some PD, which makes sense because of all the work we're doing, but we're designing PD more in-house and optimizing during free period. So if you look at how many instances of out-of-class time we have, but align it with how many times a sub was needed, you're going to see that it's minimal. So, as I said, we talked about including that, so I'll try to, I'll reattach that, and happy to talk about it again. Notes of interest, I hope you had a chance to look at that link. We think it's fascinating. This is, when we talk about education is changing, this is one of those examples. At least 80 colleges and universities announce plans for a new application process and a new approach to preparing high school students. And that would be portfolio-based. That would be interesting in that new portfolio base, how it pushes down into schools and asks them, in a healthy way, for ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students to all consider what their post-grad plan is going to be. And when you look at it, quite frankly, it's very analogous to what we do with our Division One exhibition, and our work with our juniors, and a portfolio, we do that with our ninth and 10th graders. We have a portfolio of their work and explain how they've grown as learners. So it's going to be right up our alley, and we're excited to watch that grow. But I also feel there's so much interest in things globally in education. I try to highlight some of those in the principal's report. And just the, in the news page, all the great things that are happening. We, I included an alumni email. It's Senior Project Season. We recently received an email, and we're also working on organizing this in a more formal fashion, because I think one of the measurements that we'll use is, you know, our alumni news, more than just anecdotally, but right now, we have a real, you know, robust collection of anecdotal information. "Hi Maggie, I don't know if you remember me, but I graduated from SHS back in 2009. I can hardly believe it's been so long. I wanted to write to you because I'm about to switch jobs, and I actually owe it all to my senior project at SHS, so I figured you might be interested in this story. I did a project about political polling, and in the course of that project, I got in touch with an outside expert at a survey research firm. My expert was based at the Washington DC office, and he was extremely helpful in guiding me through the designing my own survey. Because of this contact, I interned for two summers while I was in college, and I ended up really enjoying the work that they did. I've been working for another company for the last two years, but tomorrow, I'm actually starting a new job at the company where I did my senior project, where my outside expert worked." It's so crazy how life works out, and she goes on to mention, "I'd love to hear how things are at Sohegan, although I'm sure it has changed so much since my time there. I'm feeling like 2009 was so long ago, but I hope that everything there is going well and you're enjoying your summer. Senior project still ranks among the most meaningful projects I have ever completed in my education." So I thought that was just very telling, Senior Project Season's up and running, and I really feel that's strong evidence of how we're moving to a competency-based, performance-based experience, and that's what higher ed and industry is looking for. Students who can perform, and students who have a level of knowledge and ability to apply it. So, happy to respond to any questions, but that's.
Any questions for Rob?
No wonder Steve has any questions.
Steve reads it thoroughly.
I actually, I mean, there's always so much information, it's kind of hard, because Rob is like talking so fast, trying to get it all in, but there's, I didn't even know about that, that survey, that student survey, the tripod, and apparently there's a committee that put it together of teachers and administrators, and I didn't even know what was going on. So I like, you know, that we get to hear the administrative reports.
Yeah, just an extension of the Teacher Leadership Committee, just the next step, was exploring this. So it's still that same committee, a subgroup that explored this, came up with tripod, teachers volunteered, and then will, they'll have some training. So after the teacher training and initial implementation, we can have another update.
Yep. And I loved hearing about the Senior Project and reading about it also. I know we have some community members, they're going to be coming and being on our Senior Project panel, which I think is great. And one of the things that we haven't even had a chance to talk about, we'll talk about in December, is Fall Forum, and one of the ideas that came out of that is having community members on roundtables, having more roundtables, starting in eighth grade, and having community members on them also. So it's great to showcase the exhibitions that we have. Any other comments or questions for Rob? Okay. So moving on, first, I'd like to, our next agenda item is Community Council Report, and I want to introduce Elizabeth Purvis. She is our new Community Council Liaison. Elizabeth is a junior here, and she was elected to be our liaison at our last meeting on Monday. So welcome, Liz.
Hi. Thank you, Mary Lou.
Yeah? And Liz gave us a, a printed copy of what she's going to discuss.
So, on council, we recently just started talking, or we just passed this proposal that I've given to everybody. It was presented by Wally and Carrie Smallwood, and they are two of our learning specialists, in case you don't happen to know who they are. And the proposal basically is asking to get rid of credit for upperclassmen for taking, for taking academic support. Thank you. And council voted in support of the proposal, and a lot of the major points that were brought up in council were in fact that upperclassmen, and when I say upperclassmen, I mean juniors and seniors, have the ability to take a free period where underclassmen do not, and the fact that academic support often gets abused and used as a homework period. So the major, those were the major reasons why that it was passed. Some other points that were brought up were that it does benefit students, that they do learn while in that setting, and it helps to have a teacher in the room. However, there are upperclassmen that during their free periods, they can go work with their teachers one-on-one, or they can come in the Learning Commons, and if there's an adult in the room, they can get help from them. So we just passed that last Monday. And then last Friday, I believe it was, there was the Fall Forum, which Mary Lou just mentioned, and I personally didn't go, but it was importantly mained, and it was on the national level, I believe. And I heard that it was a very positive experience. A lot of council members went, including students, and I've heard that it was very positive, and we've gotten some ideas of how we can improve as a school as well.
And we're going to invite the students and faculty members to the meeting next month to talk about Fall Forum, and so we'll discuss it more then and get the students' feedback. But I agree, Liz, it was a positive experience, especially for the students, it seemed. And so, yeah, that, we're also going to put, if anyone has any questions for Liz, but we're going to put for an agenda item for December, discussion about the proposal that was passed, because it was, because it has to do with curriculum, it was a recommendation to the school board, because it doesn't actually fall under Community Council's purview. So this was a recommendation that the school board can discuss and vote on, so we'll have that as an action item for December's agenda. But in the meantime, if you'd like to ask Liz, she'll be here next month too, but if you want to ask her any questions about that, and again, like Liz said, it was taking credit away. Right now, juniors and seniors can take academic support and get credit for it, and the thought process is, is they're working and learning in that class, and so therefore they get credit. And I think one of the things that Carrie and Wally felt was that, you know, just like when you move on to college, or move from middle school to high school, you accept responsibilities of being more, a more independent learner, and this would help that. One of the key things, though, that their proposal is based on is the fact that the Learning Commons will be staffed all periods, so that the students that need the support, in particular students with IEPs or 504s, will have somewhere to go and get the support that they need. So I guess that's, was one of the, I guess, drawbacks that came up, is we would have to be ensured that this, the Learning Commons was actually staffed. They felt that the learning specialists weren't spending time in academic support classrooms, they would be able to be in the Learning Commons, but that is not, you know, that would be up to the administration as well, so next month, we can get feedback from them as well. Jeanne?
Could I just ask, I didn't read this carefully, so if it's on here, I apologize. Do all grades get credit for academic support?
Yes. Currently, all grades get it, so you can take it all four years and end up getting four credits in academic support, and that was another reason why it was brought up, because Wally and Carrie believed that students should push themselves as upperclassmen and take more new learning classes, as they put it, where you're learning new material, so you take another science class, or you could take a free period as an option. So that was the major driving force behind the proposal.
I have just one more question. How is, how is that explained, I guess is the word, on a transcript? I mean, what, how does, how does a college see academic support? And what do they?
That'd be from Rob. Yeah, Rob.
Yeah, we checked with, I don't know if Karen's here for the actual identification. Academic support, Karen, that's identification on the transcript is?
It's listed as academic.
So we use that, I agree.
Okay, and we can discuss it more next month too, because the administration isn't prepared, you know, to discuss it, and we didn't have it as an action item.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 don't be sorry, because I wanted you to ask questions of Liz, she will be here next, next month also. I didn't know if there's any questions about the discussions surrounding this proposal that Liz might be able to answer now, but yeah, but we will have it as an action item in December.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Liz, or no? All right, thank you, and again, welcome. We'll see you next month.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll move on to committee reports. So any committees wishing to report out?
The Policy Committee met yesterday. Dave's room together. It was yesterday. We're in the process of streamlining, the process of getting the policies to the boards. We worked on one policy and finalized that, and it's the BCA, it's the ethics policy for all, all the boards, and that will be coming to each individual board now. And then we talked about how to better streamline our process, and we think that we have that pretty much figured out.
The process of reviewing all the policies?
It's a daunting task, because it's so many policies, and then once you get started doing one set of policies, and you go through, and all of a sudden, you have to go back to the beginning and start over again.
Yeah.
Again, I was going to say this, I, we want to make sure that Karen, Jeanne can hear us, so she could hear me, so we just, I know, because I was back there one time, it's a long room, to make sure people can hear us in the back, as well as the public. Thank you.
All right, any other committees? The Stadium Project Committee, do you have an update?
Yeah, I mean, I asked Travis Warren for an update where we are financially, and out of the estimated $918,000 for the projects, we're at a total of $765,000, so we're, that's about the 83% level, so we're still a bit short, we're still pursuing a few large donors, but we've got a lot of bricks to sell, too, so. Better ways to go in that, I think. We're continuing to move up, and we're getting close to about 100 or so sold, but we need at least 200.
Is that, I was going to ask what the goal was, as far as the number of bricks?
Yeah, I think the initial goal was like 500, so.
Well, we've got 22 years' worth of about 250 graduates per year.
Exactly. Well, we have this subject about getting alumni, access to alumni information, and I don't know where that's gone. Probably nowhere.
I know there's been talk of, and I'm not sure where we stand on that, there was actually an alumni who was willing to help set up like an alumni database, and I think that's still in the beginning stages, but right now, I'm not sure that we have the ability to, other than personal contact of people that we know, which we should all reach out to. And I did want to reiterate too, that you just reminded me, we said this last time, but it doesn't hurt to say it again, to buy a brick, you can go to amherstfoundation.org and backslash stadium, and it's also on the SAU 39 website under Sohegan High School. And there's, each brick can be engraved with three lines, 14 characters per line, so, so yeah, if you haven't already, or if, you know, they could be coaches' gifts, they could be graduation gifts, you know, whatever, your favorite teacher, favorite coach, so a team brick. But they've, the committee, in particular, the fundraising part of the committee, has done a great job, you know, really working hard, so thank you, guys. Any other, anything else to add? Dave do you have anything to add?
No.
All right. Mary Lou, is this the time when you might want to summarize our discussion the other night?
Uh, yeah, actually, thank you for reminding me of that. We had a board discussion, it was a public meeting, but we talked about concerns that have come out specifically by Washington coach, Washington State coach, soccer coach, and we, it had to do with the crumb rubber filling in, in the turf field. So we just wanted people to know that we are on top of that, we are watching that, we are looking for any new information. Right now, there is no scientific data that, you know, about any detrimental effects from the turf field, but we are, you know, we are aware and watching to see if there are any studies done or any concerns brought up, so, so yeah, and have been in touch with a couple of different outside experts as well. Anything else, Jeanne, you want to add? I know you've talked to some outside experts, but.
No, that's, that's about it. Thank you.
All right, no other committee reports? Steve, do you know if PPC, because you mentioned this last time, has done, they were going to do a survey on insurance buyouts? Because this is the time of year, so I didn't know if that was.
There was a survey done, there was a preliminary discussion at the last PPC meeting about, the survey results suggest it may not be economic, but Betty was going to look into the data, and I don't know if she's had a chance to do that.
Well, yes, actually, I didn't do it because the PPC did not want to meet on it again, so that's kind of, I think we'll have to pursue it next year.
Next year, during negotiations, okay. Okay. All right. Public comment, I know there's at least one member of the public, I don't know, do you want to switch seats with, or do you want to let her pull a chair up, or let her take care of the microphone?
No, she can, yeah, she can have my seat.
All right, welcome Maggie, I mean, you can introduce yourself, but welcome.
Hi, I'm Maggie McCabe, and I'm a resident of Amherst, and I had the opportunity, thank you for letting me speak, thank you for letting me speak to this group. I had the opportunity to speak to the ASD group, and I'm kind of doing the same thing that I did with them. Okay, so in front of you, I'm sorry that you didn't get this ahead, I thought it was attached to the agenda request, but anyway, I guess you didn't see it. But what it is, is a dump of a lot of historical information from the state of New Hampshire website. And it's basically all the history I could find from the DOD website. And it starts in the left hand from year 2001 going up to 2021. And if there's not information filled in, that means that there wasn't that information available on the state website, so I filled in what I could for that time period. Okay? In some cases, there was enrollment numbers, the staffing numbers only went back, you know, to 2005, '06, so I completed whatever I can. So I'm going from left to right, I'm just going to walk you through the columns, and if you followed any of my articles that were in the paper, my lengthy tomes that were in the paper, this is basically what this is all about. It's explaining cost per pupil, all-in-per-pupil costs, and how the numbers all come together. So on the left-hand side are the staffing numbers broken down into those categories, teachers through other, other support, total staff, and then it shows the percentage changes, decrease between those years. Then the next column is student enrollment, and the enrollment percentage changes, the cost per pupil, the percentage changes of cost per pupil, the ADM, which is the calculation of attendance, that's used for the calculation of cost per pupil. And then by taking the ADM times the cost per pupil, I came up with this estimated cost per pupil actuals. That's not the total budget, it's just the portion that's related to cost per pupil. And then on top of that, there's the next column, other costs, which are transportation, the things that are taken out of cost per pupil, that are then added back in. And then the next column is the total actual budget, and I confirmed those with Betty's. So those are the annual appropriation budgets. So if you see, oh, then I put in the state mean cost per pupil, and I'll address that in the next attachment, and the percentage above or below that, that ours is to the state. The all-in-per-pupil cost, so if you look at the column that says per-pupil cost, let's just take the year 2013, 2014. Our per-pupil cost was $19,001.2, our all-in-per-pupil cost was $21,538, with warrant articles and the things that were taken out of cost per pupil. Then the last two columns are the student-to-teacher ratio, which you've mentioned in other meetings. The last number we have is 10.66. And then the final column is the student-to-the-total-staff ratio. That means for each student, there are 5.85 adults, which to me sounds like a lot. That's just a commentary.
Isn't there a way around? 5.5 students per adult.
Yeah, that would make more sense.
Yes, I'm sorry, I had it backwards. Sorry, I had it backwards. Yes, that's, yes, there's about six students per adult. Yes, okay. So then if you look in the lower-left-hand column, the summary, the enrollment decreased was 18.36%, the cost per pupil increased was 50.92%, and the CPI index for that same time The cost-per-pupil increase was 50.92 percent, and the CPI index for that same time period was 14.16 percent. And the staff decrease was 12.28 percent. And if you go to the middle section, the percentage above the state mean was 34.75. Our target is 10 percent above CES peer groups, and I'm not sure how that's defined, so I use the state, and we can just, you can discuss that with me. And then the production, the percentage reduction needed to equalize with the peers. And the whole point of this is, I wanted everyone to see the numbers in one place, because the bottom line is, we need to manage our enrollment decreases, because they're not going to go away. Our demographics are that we're, our state demographics are that we are declining student population. And we've got to vie for those students, which is why I want to look at the next. So basically, this is just a lot of information that I want you to have, and I've seen bits of it and pieces all over the place, but it's good to see it all together, and hopefully it'll make sense of the stuff I've been writing in the paper, because you'll see the columns and how they tie in. So the second attachment is why I use the state mean, okay? Because one of the things I mentioned in the articles is that there's an inverse relationship between if enrollment declines, cost per pupil goes up, no matter what you do. If you keep the budget flat, it's an inverse relationship. So, it's important to look at, and this is a chart that Betty did from the deliberative session, so I brought it back to you. The little red things are mine, okay? But the reason I use the state is, because if you look at the state and you look at Sahegan, the state decreased by 12 percent, and Sahegan decreased by 14. Cost-per-pupil went up 30 and 31. It's a good comparison, because we have the same, almost the same rate of decline. If you look at Bo, which is in the left-hand column, Bo went down 27 percent, and their cost-per-pupil went up 45. So part of it is that they went down, enrollment went down, inverse relationship, cost-per-pupil goes up. But the other thing you could say is, they did not react as quickly to declining enrollment as they should have. On the other end of the spectrum, of the other column, is Bedford. It's the only one in the list where enrollment increased and cost-per-pupil decreased. Again, inverse relationship. We want to aspire to be that bar graph. We want to have people come into our community and increase the number of pupils who decide that Amherst is the town, and that is related to quality. Okay? So if we can have more students come in, automatically, your cost-per-pupil goes down. Okay? So that ties in with the whole strategic plan and authority.
Can I ask, and Betty, you might, was this, are these high schools or are these total districts?
I think, I think I did high schools for that.
I don't know, it was Betty's chart from the deliberative.
Okay.
I'm not sure, really, at this point.
Then just, then Bedford would not be a good example, because Bedford, as a new high school, started with two grades only, and then added another grade, and then added another...
Well, and that could be part of their growth, but what I'm saying is...
Right, that's why they grew.
That is part of why they grew. But, you know, I mean, I could've said that, I could've just focused on that their cost-per-pupil is lower. What I'm trying to show to you is, it's a nuance. It's not, because there is this inverse correlation. It's nuanced. It's like, you can do it a number of different ways. You can increase your student population by attracting more young families into our community, which is also good for the real estate values and people who want to sell their houses. But, I mean, there's different ways to do it, but I think you have to look at it in the combination of quality and costs. That the other page was focused more on the costs, and that we declined staff only 12 percent when our enrollment declined 18 percent. Okay? And where we stood in comparison. And I know there's talks about peer group, and the problem is, you can't just pick a peer group, because you have to look at these issues. Did their enrollment decline as much as our enrollment declined? If not, how do you equate for that enrollment decline? So it's, you know, you're, the reason I use the state was because the state was pretty close to ours. We went down 12, they went down, we went down 14, they went down 12, so it was pretty close, so it gives us. Now, what percentage should be in comparison to the state number? I don't know. Is it the 10 percent that's the CES, or is it 15 percent? That is a topic you guys can debate. Okay? That's my first topic. My second topic was the paving. I know in the budget, and maybe we'll hear some more about it, there were $600,000 proposed for the paving project, and I'm not sure where it stands in the budget, and we'll find out, but if you read my last article, I'm a proponent of Warren articles, and I'm a proponent of bonding with Warren articles for infrastructure. And the reason is, I think the equity issue is the overriding factor. If you are going to have an asset that lasts 10, or 15, or 20 years, then all of the taxpayers should share in that cost over the life of that asset. So, the way it was originally proposed in the assumptions was a three-year, $200,000 for the paving. That means the taxpayers over the next three years will pay for that, that's not an equitable distribution of the cost to all the taxpayers. So I want to raise that, I don't know if anything's gonna come out about that. And I prefer bonding, even though it costs more money. And one of the questions I asked, and I went back and did research on it, why was the roof only done over seven years? Okay? And I was told there was a second proposal, I went and found it, it was 10 years. Still, I would've said, why wasn't it...
Seven, 10, 20 originally?
Well, I saw in the paper, the article referred to two proposals, a seven-year and a 10-year. I would've said it should've been 15 or 20, the life of the asset, because that's how, then you equally pay for it. Each taxpayer equally pays for it. So I think for capital projects that are infrastructure-related, bonding with, a Warren article with bonding is the best way to go. And I also think you have to make a case to the taxpayers on a separate Warren article. And with the paving project, since it was a part of the original 2.950 project, 2.2 million, 950,000, that was taken out, you have to ask, why was it? And I'll tell you, the part of it is, that our roads are terrible in town. I know that's not your problem, but we gotta go look at the parking lot, and if I have to decide, I'm gonna go look at my road, and look at the parking lot, and decide who should get the money, because the roads in the town are terrible, too. So that's, that's another issue, why, if it's a safety issue, then make a case to the voters by a Warren article. And if you decide not to do it as bonding, I'm okay with that, if you've made the case to the, and the town all approves it that way. But I do think it needs to be a separate case, not embedded in the operating budget. Okay? That's the second thing. The third thing is, I wanted to talk about unfunded pension, unfunded liabilities. I went to the audit statement of last year, and there are unfunded liabilities in the audit statement. I don't know where we are with the audit this year, but last year, there were compensated balances, which is equivalent to sick leave payout, of $874,171 in the audit, and other post-employment benefits of $640,264. This concerns me, for the same reason I just articulated, about having the right taxpayers pay for these things. If we have an unfunded liability, future taxpayers are gonna be paying for that unfunded liability. So, follow my article from last month, we should be doing capital reserves for these unfunded liability. It also helps if we ever want to go build something, because it helps your bonding, bond rating, if you have funded the unfunded pension liability. And the state of New Hampshire is ranked sixth in unfunded pension liabilities. Our state pension system's in trouble. And sixth meaning there's only four, five that are worse than us. And we only fund 57.4 percent of our pensions. And the state Supreme Court in January came out saying, there is no guarantee you will get your pension. So, it's concerning to me, because we, as the employer of these people, have a liability issue, and we need to recognize it, and I think we should start accruing for it by setting up reserves. And there is a House bill, I wanted to bring this to the board's attention, so maybe you guys could write to our state representatives. There is a House bill, 369, which was just recently proposed, and what they are considering is trying to change the state pension plan from a defined benefit to a defined contribution. That way, you pay as you go, you contribute, that's all our liability would be, would be the contribution, and it would go to the employees and not to the state, and you wouldn't have the issue of the state mismanaging it, not, you know, not making the investments they want, not charging, whatever they did, I don't know what they did over the years, but obviously, 57.4 percent funding is not a stellar example of fiduciary responsibility. So, I bring all these things to you, because I think some of them you might want to think about to incorporate in the budget or Warren articles, or, and I know I'm a little late, because you already have Budget One coming out tonight, but it's something, I know we have time to revise, and I'd like you to consider the proposals I'm suggesting. Yes?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
In number two, you talked about bonding versus a Warren article, but you didn't mention one of the things that concerns me about bonding, and that is, is that when you bond, you build it into the budget, so it becomes part of the default for the subsequent years, whereas you have a Warren article, and it goes through, and it passes, or whatever, it's that year, it's only that year.
Right.
What do you stand on that? What do you think about that, Maggie?
Well, that's what you did with the track. You put one Warren article in, it requires only 50 percent to approve, and you've expensed it, but you had on the track a reserve, so you applied part of it against the reserve and part of it, so it softened the blow. The point is, if you try to put, and I gave that example in the newspaper, I hope you've had a chance to read it, but if you put the whole $600,000 in, you're up to almost the cost of the annual amortization cost per pupil for Bedford High School, for the whole high school. Like, it's $89 difference between a $600 over, you know, one year, versus, $600,000 over one year versus a whole building over 24 years. That's, that's the beauty of amortization, that you can spread the cost over the number of years. Does it cost more? Yes, because you're paying interest, and you're paying, you know, you're paying probably a bonding fee to get the bonding, whoever we use, municipal bonding company to help us with that, we're paying fees. But I think the overriding factor is the equitable distribution of the cost to current and future taxpayers, and I will always come down on that. As an accountant, I think, you know, that's the whole point of amortization. That's why we amortize, to be, to spread the cost equally over the life of the assets.
Yes, if you remove the bonding costs in subsequent years after the bonding is done, after the bond payments are done, but that's not always the case, that happens.
You can always, unless there's a clause not allowing you to repay it, I mean, you could try to get clauses that say, can you pay it earlier? I don't know what the penalties would be on that, though. But, you know, I think if, I would rather have you do the, I'd rather have you make the laundry list, and come to the voters with a $2 or $3 million bond for things that are gonna last a long time, and get them done at one time.
But my concern is, is that when we paid off the bond for the school here, in 2012, I think it was, I'm not sure...
Your budget didn't go down.
The budget, it...
Do you know why?
Basically, that money was absorbed.
No, you, no, it wasn't. You know where it went?
No.
It went on the roof in the HVAC.
Well...
And the reason is, you only did it over seven years. If you had done that over 20 years, or whatever the life of that asset would've been, then some of that money would've come out of the budget. Because you, you, by having a shorter amortization period, the amount per year was higher, and therefore, you almost, you like traded off...
There was a year break in between the two, as I recall. I don't believe I'm not, if I recall it correctly.
That's okay. I mean, it's close, it was close to what it was.
But the idea that, that if you bond something, the bond payments will stay, you know, are in for those three years or five years, or whatever it is, and then that money is built into the default budget for subsequent years.
Well, that's the...
And that's the problem.
No, that shouldn't be the case, because...
Well, it shouldn't be, but it is.
And even in this, I just quickly looked through this budget, and it shows those type of one-off things. Those are the kind of things that the board should be looking at. What are one-off things that are not going to be repeated from year to year? That's your fiduciary responsibility, because there's probably more than just that that you need to look at. You know, maybe there was something that, this year, we did this special project, and it's not gonna be in there for next year. Those are the things you need to always look for.
And we do, and Betty is good about pointing those out to us also, and we look at them because that would be our default budget, or the one-off things that would occur in the following year's budget, so, but anyways, you know, thank you for coming, and we appreciate it, and I think we could probably, you know, discuss different philosophies, you know, for a long time, and we can maybe have a conversation outside of here, too, but...
Yeah, and I mean, basically, I mean, you may not agree with how I approach things, but I do it from an accounting's perspective.
You obviously have a lot of knowledge on that, and so it's great to hear the perspective. So, we appreciate you coming and for bringing the information, too, because it's kind of hard to, like at deliberative, to talk when you don't have the information, the different scenarios in front of you.
Oh, and the one thing I wanted to tell you about this HHB 369, I mean, I think it would be wise, if the board has supported that idea, to contact the state representatives on it.
I was just gonna, I was gonna say that, I'm glad you did, is that not just the board, but anyone can, because all of them...
Well, anyone can, but I mean, I think as a school district, if you say, this is important to us, I think the teachers should be concerned about this.
I think so, too.
Because in January, the Supreme Court said, okay, you can have a pension, but we're not gonna guarantee it. It's not gonna be guaranteed. And they can change the payouts, they can change the formulas, they can change the whole thing on you. So, as an employee, I'd rather much have the defined contribution plan that I know it's gonna be mine, and I can manage it.
I agree, the board, the staff, and, but also taxpayers.
And taxpayers.
Because they've been affected by that requirement.
Yeah, because then, then whatever we contribute that year is all we're on the hook for.
Yeah.
And this is why I brought up the issue of the unfunded liability. I, in the, this year's audit, there's a new, there's a new ruling on pensions under the General Accounting Standards Board, GASB, and now that liability, it's currently in the footnotes, or it's referenced in the footnotes, it's going to be on the balance sheet. It's going to be there as a liability, like these other two. And I'm concerned that these other two, we need to address, because here's one other thing, like even the sick leave, we know you get 90 accumulated days, and at the end, you're gonna have to pay those out. Most teachers are going to have those 90 days at the end. I guarantee you, the number of years they're teaching, they're gonna accumulate those 90 days. That is a liability that's going to happen, we're going to pay it. So, by not accruing for it now, and not saving for it now in a capital reserve, what happens if suddenly our enrollment decreases even further, and then we have no, let's say, the normal is, we're doing it pay-as-you-go, and the normal is four or five leave? Well, what happened if 10 leave, and we don't have the extra money in the budget for that? You're gonna wish you had a reserve.
Okay, well, thank you, you brought up, oh, sorry.
Could I, could I just ask a question? I thought we had an expendable trust fund of some kind that has that money set aside?
We do have an expendable trust fund, but there's not a lot of money in it.
Okay, so we should probably boost that?
Yeah, because when you look at the audit, they say zero funded, for those lines.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just taking what the audit says, and it says zero.
I just wanted to make a, a point of information, too, that bonding carries with it a much higher bar for passage.
60 percent.
Yeah, so, and it, you know, I've seen over time, it takes us three tries, three year, you know, years in a row before we get bonds passed, so...
Right, but...
It is quite a bar to pass.
No, and I understand that, and I understand that, but I think if you make a good argument, I don't think, I think the taxpayers will support it.
You do, you're absolutely right, but it sometimes takes three tries.
The track was an issue, I mean, the track was an issue, you had a choice, you could've put the track in the budget, you decided to do it as a Warren article. Yes, it wasn't a bonded Warren article. And here's the thing, if it's something that's recurring, like if it were computers, that you know every year you're gonna have to spend a certain amount, enroll them every year and buy so many, that's not the type of projects I'm talking about. I'm talking about projects that have useful lives over 10 years, you know, and have some kind of threshold, $250,000, big projects, I'm not talking about little projects. Those are the ones. And there might be enough of those, if you put them together, it makes sense to get them done all at once, spread the cost over a number of years, so that the hurt of it isn't as bad to the taxpayers, and get the things, instead of keep deferring it, instead of trying to put it in the budget and keep losing it, because it's gonna get cut.
I think Tim had a comment or question, too?
Yeah. Do you have another printout of this? I didn't get one.
Here, I think it's just one right here, Maggie.
Is there?
Yeah. Okay, sorry. I looked it up. Otherwise, I'll take one from the crowd.
Too bad.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Maggie, very much.
Okay.
If you have any other questions, Jeanine, Betty, too. Okay. All right, great. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, and right away, I wanna, we're gonna pull the $1,000 destination imagination on anticipated revenue, because that actually was supposed to go to the... that actually was supposed to go to the Empress District, not to us, unfortunately. And I'm also going to pull one of the retirement requests that were in our packet, because that's something that we will have to discuss in our public, because it's an exception. And, which one? Oh, yeah, in the July 21st and August 20th minutes also, I'm going to pull right off the back, because we have a legal question on those. So, after all those-
Did you, did you pull the October 1st ones as well?
I did not pull the October 1st ones as well, those were not, we didn't have a legal question on those, I believe.
They're just some corrections that need to be made.
Oh, okay, no, I didn't, I didn't have any corrections. Do you have corrections on the October 1st?
I just have one.
Okay, then we'll pull those as well.
Okay.
And can we just be clear, what retirement requests were, is still, that we're voting on?
What's left?
Maybe you should-
Maggie.
Okay, I'll pull both.
All right, you know, just so that's clear, what we're voting on.
So, we'll, we'll pull them both, yeah. That does not leave much, so why don't we make the corrections? Jeannie, you have the corrections to the October 1st minutes?
Yes, line 232, where it says, Mr. Rob Scully spoke about the four different areas of technology they are looking at, when they are looking at when building the budget, and how they can interrelate. I'm sure you didn't say it that way.
That's what I sound like.
Probably did.
He's going to say it better when you write it wrong.
So just probably take out a couple of those words, and it'll work. It says, it, just take out, there's an extra, it's four different areas of technology they are looking at when building the budget and how they can interrelate, so just take out-
The second "are" looking at.
Yes.
They are looking at.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, when they are-
They are looking at.
When they are looking at.
Yes.
Any other changes? Does anyone else have any other changes? No? Okay. So, does anyone, anyone want to motion to accept, which would just be the Treasury's report, and the October 1st minutes as amended?
And the Sven graphic.
And the Sven graphic donation.
So moved.
Tim, you got a second? So Steve moves, and Tim seconds? Okay, all in favor? Dave?
I have to stay.
Oh, okay. Any opposed? Okay, so six in favor, and Dave is abstaining.
Abstention.
He wasn't here. Okay, all right, great. So, presentations, FY '17 budget, so Rob and Betty.
I think we're just here going back to when our Budget Study Committee was, was developed in 2013, and some of the things that we had looked at, and our goal at that time was to develop comprehensive data-driven budget evaluation, and to make sure that we're doing zero-based budgeting as, as we want to, and some of the different things that we looked into. Costs per pupil, salary benefits comparisons, we pulled a lot of data, our enrollment trends, ratios, and as well looked at our learning opportunities program studies in our facilities. So, those are the kind of things that we have been looking at for the last number of years, and are still looking at, and a lot of the things needed time to kind of put things into place to create this budget that we have tonight. Let's see, if we look at our goals.
I guess the important thing about that is the analysis over those two, two and a half years, is what made the recommendations, the Budget Study Committee made about 14 recommendations to the board based on that analysis, some for future years' planning, like negotiations, and some for this current budget. Yes, thank you, Mary Lou.
So, the goals of our, of our current budget, we want to have fiscal responsibility, building our student experience, implementation of our SAU 39 strategic plan, protecting our district assets, and to do more with less. And that's, that's really goals that we developed, not just this year, but last year, and those are what we're carrying on.
Let me include this slide to just underline the fundamental principles that we address everything educationally and building a budget, and our mission statement, so we're very proud of, and has guided us, as I said, in decision-making, whether it's for educational purposes, and now how it impacts our approach to budget. If you just look at the bulleting, to support and engage in individuals' unique gifts, passions, intentions, to develop and empower the mind, body, heart, to challenge and expand comfortable limits, to inspire and honor the active stewardship of family, nation, and globe. So again, very powerful verbs, support, engage, develop, it's great for learning, it's a very vibrant, robust teaching and learning environment based on those verbs, but in terms of building a budget, those verbs and our mission imply that we're in a perpetual state of growth, we have to deliver services, maintain and improve practices and systems, but our job is to honor those words that create a very vibrant learning experience, and with a very fiscally responsible growth model. So, that is, again, what we promote as our fundamental beliefs, and in terms of building a budget, there's a lot of implication in there of growth, and how we're going to do that responsibly. And to the next slide, you'll hear this term a lot, building the student experience. You'll see on this slide the draft of our goal, and our goal, again, it's always the, you know, serving the two masters of a great educational institution, but also one that can do it with a budget that's very sustainable. So, highlight a few key things here. You'll hear a lot in the coming months and years about an educational system that includes competency-based learning environment, using performance assessments to determine student mastery of knowledge and skill. So, curriculum will be aligned with standards, content area and course level competencies will be developed, learning progressions will be clearly articulated, data and research will inform decisions, program of studies provides various pathways to experience. The existing philosophies and emerging requirements and expectations that we have to adhere to are, in regards to minimum standards, our strategic plan, and the ASK accreditation process. So, again, this is a slide to provide context with what we're trying to do educationally, and again, really emphasize that the value added, as, you know, Maggie just mentioned, there's a desire and a determination to be a school recognized at the state and national level as a destination high school. So, we'll be talking budget and a lot of numbers, but we can't forget that side of value added, we're going to be the best high school, and the town we'll really, really be proud of.
So, this slide just shows a few key statistics, so we can just show where we've been, which have been pointed out a few times to us, but, and show where we're going, and where we are. Our pupil teacher ratio on the top line, 9.1 in FY '13, has steadily increased, 10.1, 10.7, and this year it's at 10.9. So, that's the direction we've headed in. Costs per pupil, it's another one, one you know to us, so we have looked at it and tried to work with that. Our cost per pupil, 19,318 in FY '13, has gone down, FY '14 it went down somewhat, 19,012, and then FY '15, down to 17,968.
And it, I'm just- Can I just say, like, that inverse relationship-
I was just going to skip.
Yeah, that Maggie talked about.
Yeah, it's not, you don't know if you did it, or if it's right with the numbers.
We, well, no.
Whoa, no.
We have been one of the only schools to have our cost per pupil go down as enrollment has gone down.
Yeah, but your enrollment went up, too.
Yeah.
So, that helps your cost per pupil.
It does help, it does help.
It's hard to quantify that.
So I was going to skip down to the, actually, to the October 1 enrollment, and point that out, that relationship that Maggie spoke about, and one of the things that we know is that that is the relationship, that divisor is going to make the difference. So, if we look at next year, we have an 829, so we know that that could make a difference, and we have to concern ourselves with defending. So, that's where we've been going. If you'll look at the next line, down in the, in the center, the total expenditures, and that, so that line, when our enrollment is going down, then we have to make darn sure our total expenditures are going down, so, and that's the direction that, again, we have been heading. So, it's, it's in the right direction. We have had return of surplus, some of that has been due to the money that's been returned to us from the Health Trust, but there have been other, other decisions we've made in our hiring, in the way that we're administering our health care, different things that we've done, decisions we've made that have reduced our costs as well. We're working on both ends, we like it when we can return surplus from Health Trust, but we like it also if we can make good decisions that end up allowing us to return money to the taxpayers. Our budgeted staff, the very bottom line, 164.9 in FY '13, and is down in this current year. The budgeted staff is 150.
Betty, can I just ask you to clarify the 829 number in FY '16 is a projected number?
Yes.
The other numbers are actual numbers.
Actuals, yes. That's, you're right.
So, it should be noted.
The FY '16 actually is our actual number.
Because the actual, yeah.
It's this year.
It's this year.
Give out October 1.
1516.
Okay.
So I have, I do have projected enrollment in here, I think, but this is our actual.
Okay.
All of these-
We have projected 815 for this year, and it came at 829.
Right. Okay.
So Betty, what is the projected for FY '17?
Uh, 813, I believe, 813.
So that's the number that'll be used in the zero-based budgeting models?
That's the number that we have, yeah. So, so FY '17 budget changes in personnel, we have, this, for this coming year that we're budgeting for, there are a lot of changes that we will have, that are budget-to-budget changes, so, so that would be a change from what we had budgeted in FY '16 to the budget for, for FY '17. We do, we will be down in administrator, we actually have reduced that now, but it was in our budget, so budget-to-budget, we are taking that out. The teachers, we're reducing 2.5 teachers. A lot of times, a lot of things that, when we've done, as I said, we've been doing the Budget Study Committee things since 2013, there are a lot of things we had to put into place, a lot of things that, that Rob and his staff have done, such as getting teachers in here who have dual certifications, so that we end up being able to be just a little more agile with our staffing. So we've put a lot of different things in place that have allowed this budget to reflect those, those things that we now have, sort of like putting the foundation on the, you know, in the house first, and now we've been able to make some big changes because we've had that in place now. We have, so we've made some other various cuts in, in all areas of the budget, so learning specialists, speech therapists, we did have to add a position. Nursing staff is cut, administrative assistant, and seasonal facilities technician. So I don't think there's too many areas that haven't been looked at in this budget.
And so we just wanted to, kind of, from the building level specifically, as we took over a couple of years ago as a new leadership group, it was really, really important for us to determine and define how we wanted the budget process to go, so some of the words that we use, the themes, fidelity, integrity, transparency, and a zero-based budget process, where we scrutinize every line, so I just wanted to take a moment to reinforce, you know, that we want dependable, honest, open process, but also, we know that we're in a time where, for us to be an excellent school, there's growth, so quite frankly, how do we grow with maintaining really moderate level or even decreasing costs? So, just highlight a couple areas, for example, staffing, as Betty mentioned, in order for us to really have fidelity and integrity to the process, you know, coming in and developing an organizational chart, and determining what we have for staffing, and reviewing job descriptions, and finding redundancies, and doing a one, two, and three-year plan where we can start addressing those redundancies, and folding jobs in, and our organizational chart will shrink in the next, you know, beginning this year, and the next year, and I also want to highlight there's a two and three-year process. Hiring practices that involve, as Betty mentioned, you know, dual certification, and staffing obviously is critical to our operations, but we really, really wanted to attack, because that's where your big-ticket items are, and that, how can we respond to this growth, offer wonderful curriculum, but also reduce, and I hope during the next couple weeks, or next couple months of the process, you'll hear that in more detail. Special education, again, another area where close scrutiny, things like closer relationship with, you know, AMS, as we examine services that we're identifying students for, reimagining some of the programs and how we offer them, and literally down to Meg and her folks counting to the hour what additional services are needed, and budgeting specifically for those, and that's that close scrutiny. Technology, a very fluid area, we're really, really going to have to keep a close watch on that, because the offerings and what we need for competency-based education is pretty pronounced. A specific example of that is where we've been moving more toward a zero client, so instead of a desktop with a tower that might cost $1,000, we're moving to more of a zero client, that's $300, but the value added is it provides remote access. So any student can access anything that we offer in any device, and it can be centralized and maintained in one, in one place. So just another example of some of the things that we're trying to do for that fidelity, and again, detailed as we go through the process. Maintenance, another area where we're looking for efficiencies, whether it's as simple as looking at flexible scheduling to diminish or get rid of overtime, and a change in practice, instead of sending all our guys to five or six different spaces where they clean, we consolidate them, get the annex cleaned, shut it down at 5 o'clock, turn the heat down, turn the lights off, things like that, so nothing's too small for us to examine, and we're really looking, you know, no stone unturned in every, and every little bit counts. An athletic, same thing, a reorganization, looking at participation trends, making sure that we're budgeting specifically for what the student needs are there. So, I just wanted to highlight some of those, and hopefully give you just some small example of the, of the scrutiny that we're, we're taking toward the budget.
So, our proposed FY '17 budget, our operating budget, will, will be down from last year's budget by a 4% decrease, so it's a little, about close to $700,000. And our total budget with, which includes- And our total budget with, which includes our food service and special revenue plans will be down 4.03%, just a slight difference.
And then again, this next slide, just an attempt to, you know, marry those two things. We're in the budget process, and of course, everything's about budget, but we can't lose sight of the fact that we're trying to grow fantastic education here, supporting next-generation education, college, career, life-ready, the student experience, what's our program of study is going to look like. A short quote from the New Hampshire Department of Ed Minimum Standards for School Approval. "The 2014 school approval standards address the change that must take place from a traditional classroom-only educational system to a transformed educational system that includes competency-based learning environments and multiple pathways to graduation, resulting in students that are truly college and career-ready." And frankly, when you look at that and interpret it, we want everybody to know that that does not equal, okay, wow, we're gonna have to do all these things for students, it must mean more and more and more. Quite the contrary, we think that we can do this with, you know, leveling out decreases in some area, occasionally, you know, an increase in cost, but it's an extremely exciting time to be in education. We're at the forefront of a lot of work, but it's important for folks to know that when we look at this just from an academic standpoint, really exciting discussions take place and innovation and creative thinking, but we as a leadership group always, always, always have the budget in mind. When, for example, curriculum development and assessment, much of this work has been shifted on-site. We redesigned the existing structures and are taking advantage of our own folks. For example, faculty and department meetings, coordinator meetings, that's over 100 hours of time that we have amongst ourselves that we can dedicate to creating curriculum and assessment. Professional development, for example, as well. We've changed the norm to be more targeted, not necessarily of what are you interested in and just, you know, apply for it and go. It's, this is what we need you to do. This is what we need you to explore in the professional development that we need from you. Teacher leader effectiveness, all the research, teachers and instruction are the most critical to learning. We've invested there. Again, just at, you know, creating or providing new tools allows us to be much more efficient in that work. I mentioned some of the things with technology and co-curricular and the facilities previously, but it's important to know, even during the budget season, that this is all really about the academic experience, and we're just gonna try to texture our, our approach to things. We never forget the budget. There's a lot of demand on schools now to be next-generation ready and how are we gonna do that? How are we gonna have the value added of being a wonderful school in a fiscally responsible approach? And we think we're on to, you know, we're off to a good, a good start. A lot of time, energy commitment, it's very substantial, and the financial commitment could be as well, but we feel like we're really, really on to minimizing that and in some places, creating decreases that offset. And again, I hope the next couple of months illustrate that through the advisory finance committee work.
So some of the other considerations we had when putting this together, we will be in the second year of a two-year agreement with the employees, and that agreement is, has a very low cost to it. That helped us keep the, keep the budget coming low. Facilities, and we do have to make sure that we keep our facilities in necessary maintenance, but not only that, because we do have a desire to be a destination high school, we need to make sure our facilities are top-notch, and we have a few items in, in our budget, such as the, the STEM labs, the storage that we need, and even a little bit of paving. I didn't know I was gonna have somebody working against me here, though. So we, so we do need to make sure our facilities are, have to be that destination high school that we, that we want to be. The employee benefits, projected increases. Again, we're fortunate this year, every two years, the New Hampshire retirement gives us a big raise, and I think as Maggie alluded to, a lot of that increase is really not about today, but it's to pay for the past sins because our pension is so underfunded. So I think we'd have about a 2% give on that, but we have 15% instead. So fortunately for us, the New Hampshire retirement was, remained level this, this year from '16 to '17. That was helpful. We did, however, have a 5% increase in the healthcare, and we also, we've, we've had this premium holiday that we, over the last few years, and we've had that in our budget actually this past year, but, for '16, but that won't happen next year. So, so that was a little more difficult to organize around. But most of the increases, we were fortunate, didn't raise to that level. Food service, again, we do have, we do have to worry about the USDA regulations. Pretty much every food service operation in this state is losing money and to a much higher tune than we are. So we're so grateful to our chef and our food service, our food service director that left us, Danielle Collins, and our new food service director, John Lash. I think they, both of them have gotten us into such a good situation. We're very fortunate that we're not sort of bleeding the same kind of money as most of the school districts are in, in that area. The transportation was a pretty, pretty difficult thing for us last year. We ended up, after going out to bid twice, we ended up, instead of a 30% increase, it was more like a 27% increase, which doesn't feel like good news. However, it will be just over 2% this year in the second year of our five-year contract, so it's a little better. Those are some other considerations that we had to look at when building the budget. But the most of our budget, you know, is staff, and this just gives you a looksee of where we were with our staff and where we are now. So in most areas, we have had reductions. If you look at the, the regular education, I think it's probably the largest area that we reduced to 74.9 teachers in FY13, down to 64.5 in FY17. And again, just to show you where we ended up with our non-certified staffing comparison. So those, we have done some reductions in those areas, not quite as many. So in a year-to-year comparison, while we have, we did show you a 4% reduction, just in the interest of full disclosure, there are a couple of things that are in our budget that we're starting with for comparison purposes. So we want to bring those out to you and make sure you're aware. So we do have a $220,000 track in there and an expendable trust deposit for $65,000. On the offsetting side of that, we do have the CBA increase that was also voted last year on a warrant article that we have to honor in this budget of $80,377, and the health insurance increase of 106. So those two do not offset each other, but it's about a half a percent difference there, I would say.
And Betty, CBA is collective bargaining?
Collective bargaining agreement, yes. It's not, it's not really a collective bargaining agreement here. It's the PPC, so I shouldn't call it collective bargaining here, but our employee association. So the things that we looked at that were outside of personnel, that were critical issues, was the redesign of the science engineering classrooms to support STEM labs, and those are proposed in our FY17 budget. The, we also have exterior masonry repair proposed for FY17, and original roads and parking lots that have deteriorated badly. And we have patched and resealed, and this is pretty much it. That's, we're, I think we're done. We can't repair anymore. It, it won't be useful. It'll be pretty much a waste of money. So we're at the end of that. So those, those items are in this budget.
We're not anticipating any big sinkholes, are we?
I'm not, no. Only if I move to Florida.
All those cars that caved into that big sinkhole.
Yes.
In the parking lot.
Where's that?
Some IHOP somewhere.
Oh, all right. Not here.
Betty?
Can we go to the end and just, then we'll take board member questions and then we'll take other questions, too, if you don't mind, Frank? That's okay.
Shall I?
All right.
The masonry repairs, is this what goes back to the Gail report?
Yes.
Is there something on this slide, Frank?
It was, but I can wait for the end. I wish, now that I'm gone.
Now that I went back to it. Now that I opened the door.
So the three capitals, to me, look like capital issue. How much are they?
So, yeah, the, the $150,000 for the parking lot. The masonry, I think it's about 20, isn't it? 20,000? I don't feel that moved down. Yeah, I'm gonna have to look them up. I will look, I will look them up. How about letting Rob finish?
I know where he is at home.
And then I'll, I'll make sure I have the right numbers.
So this next slide is just a reminder for some who've been following this closely recently, that the budget study committee, as highlighted earlier, has done years of work trying to be reactive and then more recently, the last couple of years, very proactive. And most recently, I believe last spring, I think, was the recommendation made to the building administration to examine what would a 3% budget decrease look like, what would a 4% budget decrease look like, what would a 5% budget decrease look like, taking into account the climate we're in, where we're trying to grow as, as well as, you know, trying to grow from the education realm and decrease from the budget realm. And quite frankly, we, you know, worked very, very hard to skip the three altogether and use four as where we feel comfortable recommending our bottom line before it starts to significantly impact programming or that growth. So instead of stopping at three, we went right through that and, you know, four would be where we were comfortable making the initial recommendation. Between four and five, we would look in these areas in just very general, that storage need that is overdue, because we're at the point, not only is it, you know, security, it's also maybe even impacting that growth that we mentioned, you know, paving, and maybe some of the advice we got tonight is one way we can consider putting that someplace else. And of course, we'd go to staffing to get to that 5%. So again, a reminder that we were asked to come up with what would three, four, and five look like. We worked really, really hard and decided not to, you know, even present three because we feel like we can get to four. And also, I want to remind folks that there is, you know, a two- and three-year context to look at this in where additional decreases would happen, but we want to maintain that value added.
Yep. And I just wanted to add to that.
Yeah.
And I, I just want to add to that two- and three-year contrast. I think we showed you a history of two and three years back. Rob is talking about two and three years forward, but I think if you look at what we have done over the past couple of years, I think you can see the direction that we're heading. And we have, we've done the planning, we've put the foundation in place, and we've been able to move to this point. We'd like to feel comfortable at this point where, and, and be able to move comfortably to the next point. But we have, we have made those, those changes that put us in a lot better position than we were back in FY13 when we had that $19,000 cost per pupil.
Well, you said to the next point, and I'm, I, could you explain what you mean by that next point? So this is today, and then you said there's another point ahead. What is that? I didn't see anything.
No, no, to the, moving forward in redesigning the, the plan as a destination high school that we are looking at to put in place the efficiencies that we're still looking at with that budget study committee, and, and that's the direction that we're headed.
So what you're saying is the budget study committee has other recommendations that you'll implement at a later time? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I, I think we saw those. We, I think there were, how many of them?
When we had the public work session with, you know, the board, all of us, those are the recommendations she was talking about, those, the ones that we brought to you, like the ones that involve negotiations, like I said earlier, you know, looking at different structures within the school, those type of things.
Yeah, it wasn't clear what you meant by next point, that's what I was.
Well, and I think we have, yeah, and I think we have, maybe there were 14 or 15 recommendations there, and I think we've, yes, so anyway, that's, that's the direction that we're moving, is looking at those, all of those recommendations. We've only really been able to move on a few of them. Oh, and, and one thing, too, before, before we get to the summary, I want to talk about the paving. So not.
I look like you.
I know.
You can guarantee it.
So, so I, I do, and it's not that I don't disagree with Maggie on the area of amortization. I understand exactly what she's saying, but I do know that a 60% bar, as Jeanie said, is very, very difficult for us to get. When we had rain coming in on the gym floor, we couldn't get a new roof. You know, so there won't.
But it may be that Susan had the paving with it.
So, we didn't, we didn't have it.
Originally, you did, and 2.950. So that's what I'm saying.
I believe we took paving. But, so, so Maggie, we proposed the paving with it, but I don't believe it ended up in that particular article.
It didn't, no.
Yeah.
It was just the roofing and the paint back.
The first one was 2.9, it was defeated. $2,009,500, the paving was defeated, and you went back to 1,000,000.
Well, I'll, I'll check that, Maggie. Yep.
You went back another year.
We, oh, we did go two years, but I don't believe we had the paving in, in either one.
The first year was 2,009,500 included the paving, and you went to 1,000,000 for the roof.
But, but just to, just to discuss that paving, so that, so that piece of it, the 60% is a very difficult barrier for us to get, and there are costs, there are costs, not just the interest costs to doing the bonding, but there are also other costs that we have to pay to do the bonding, to bonding attorneys and, and, you know, and the, you know, the costs of doing that financing. So those, if we had those costs every time, we did $600,000 of fixes, because that's not a high amount for our budget. If we had those costs each and every time, those are $15,000 to $20,000 right there. And then we have, and then we also have the, you know, the interest rate. Now that, at this point in time, is, is really negligible, I'll, you know, I certainly will give you that. But those two items alone, to, to have those for small items of $600,000 that we can put over a number of years, not doing it all in one as, as we had planned to do a paving program, we have $150,000 of paving in this budget. So I, I think that that's the kind of thing that we would prefer to look at so that we wouldn't be looking to a 60% bar. And I wanted to, to, the storage was 75,000, and I lost that page again because I wanted to go back to the paving. $75,000 for the storage, $150,000 for the paving, and, let's see, it's right here. $80,000, I believe, for the, for the labs, the STEM labs, and the masonry repair, $15,000. And we were, yeah.
All right, quick summary. The proposed budget supports implementation of the strategic plan, and we try to include on this presentation that icon in what specific area of the strategic plan, for example, streamlining connective road code is critical to our being able to create efficiencies at this building and even possibly district-wide. The budget supports the student experience program of studies that provides various pathways to graduation, professional development that includes instruction, curriculum assessment development that addresses the college career readiness and the next generation. development that addresses the college career readiness and the next generation learning, you know, supports cohesiveness throughout the district, technology integration, fostering greater access to teaching and learning opportunities. A quick aside there is another, you know, example, as we blend classrooms to create a more robust course as opposed to, you know, the old model. When I say old, I'm even talking, you know, five or six years ago where it was, we would just have to layer on another program or another course that would impact staffing, et cetera. So technology integration that create efficiencies in instruction. Building space configuration to support new learning models, we're sitting in one of them right now. It supports attracting and retaining highly qualified employees because we, well, the leadership team at least pays attention to a lot of things, not the least of which is who we're attracting to our town, and we've been encouraged in the last year, anecdotal evidence suggesting that folks are searching us out as an SAU 39, and it supports, you know, the critical facility needs.
And we can go on to the warrant articles?
Yeah. Why don't we have questions in this part of the budget first, if anybody does? Chris?
I just had a couple of questions on the, some of the facility stuff. Maybe if you can describe what, what the redesign of the engineering labs or the STEM labs, what does that entail? What do we get for that 80,000? And the same sort of for the storage, what's the proposal for the storage?
The STEM labs first, this year, I forget where we are, Jim might know and John might know where we are as far as accessing an agency to come in and do the evaluation. So this year, we have the redesign assessment, so it's stage one. And then based on what that recommendation is, next year, we look for the redesign. So we're not sure what it looks like yet because the first stage hasn't happened. That's probably in this frame or in some point in the winter. I'm not sure where Jim and John are with getting a group to come in and assess our current labs, et cetera.
But you're confident that 80,000 is the right amount, or that's just kind of what you're willing to?
No, Jim, yeah, Jim and John actually, I think they looked at it and felt that that would be approximately the number needed.
So the 80,000 is not an evaluation, it's really to implement things by FY17.
This year is the evaluation year, right?
And then we'll, yeah, then we would have them put in. So we would be able to, we would hope that we would, we would spend the money this year to do that redesign, you know, the plan, and then in the summer, the coming summer, we would be able to do that. That would be the plan.
Jeanie? I think we need some clarification. The 80,000 is buying us what?
Your STEM labs. That's the actual, that's the actual work being done.
Okay, so it's getting us a redesign and the work.
Well, we, no, we're doing the redesign this year. That's in our current budget.
But that's, that's just costing 80,000 for the redesign?
No, so the actual creation, building-
Yes.
Of those labs-
Yes.
And furnishing and-
Yes.
Putting the plumbing in, everything else will be the 80,000.
What do you anticipate those changes to be, though? I'm curious.
Well, that's why we're having-
For 80,000.
Yeah, that's why we-
If you not know, if you don't know, then it's 80, maybe plus or minus something.
Yeah, so that's why, you know, the evaluation will be done, and as I said, when John and Jim, you put their heads together so we could predict their next year's budget, they arrive at that figure where, you know, outdated, they're original things in that area. It's not a huge space, it's not a wing, it's several rooms, but it's as simple as updating, as Betty mentioned yesterday, you know, the plumbing, et cetera. But we'll have to look at the design and decide relative to the-
But how do they come up with the 80,000?
Can I suggest, why don't we invite Jim to the next meeting to go over both the storage and the lab designs?
Well, I think you'll be meeting with him in the, in the subcommittees, and then if that is not, you know, if you don't get a good enough read on it from that point, then then we can-
Okay, and who's doing, are you doing building and grounds?
I'm doing.
You're doing buildings and grounds? Okay, so if anybody has any, you know, why don't you direct your questions to Chris?
Yeah.
So when Chris meets with Jim, then, you know, she can clarify and come back to us, and if we still have questions, then obviously, you know, we'll have to have further discussion. Oh, sorry, Dave.
Maybe it was just this last week that I was away and worked thinking about coalition all the time, but when you talked about the framework for how you wanted, what you wanted to do, Rob, in terms of educational things, they were the internal, those are, most of the things you talked about were, you know, internal Sahagian principles. In fact, you listed only Sahagian principles, you didn't really talk about the coalition at all. There's no diminished effort on maintaining coalition concepts and ideas, is there? Or is that a given, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it is. That's where we establish all our fundamental tenets are from the coalition. So it's a center, it's Sahagian slash coalition principles.
Okay.
Are you talking about the ten comma principles, Dave?
Yeah, basically that. I mean, it wasn't mentioned, it was kind of like, is that omission or is that by design?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should be more overt about, you know, mentioning the principles and how they formulate not only budget, but I would say more academic culture.
I think it's become second nature to us almost, a few things are going to highlight those elements.
Steve?
I hate to say the word, but paving.
The key word? Yeah, the key word.
The key word. So the number that we've kicked around for the last 10 years or so, since the Gail report has been 600,000 total for the, for the total facility paving, is the 150 an idea to chunk it into quarters, or are we just saying, hey, petroleum-based materials are so cheap that you can get by with a third of 150?
There you go. There you go. Yeah, yes, a little bit of both there. We feel, we feel we can do a lot more with less this year because of the costs of the petroleum, yeah, that's exactly right. So we're hoping that we'll get as much done with 150 as what we had planned with 200.
Dave, just a quick, you know, aside, you know, thinking of your question, this slide, mission statement could very easily just also have included the coalition principles, and there actually was an unintentional omission on the next slide, existing philosophies and emerging interests would easily say coalition.
Well, that's why I was wondering if you had intentionally omitted those for some reason.
No, no. Just a little implied and then accidental omission in that area.
Tim?
It was mentioned that the paving is a capital project. The masonry is only 15,000, but does that fall under also a capital improvement? I mean, it is capital improvement, but-
It's 15,000, I don't want to bond it.
I know, but not by itself, I know. I mean, I'm going off of, you know, Maggie's-
Well, these are, you know what, these are various and sundry things, and somebody who might want to vote for the paving might think the storage, no, but then the opposite person might think storage is great but not paving, and, and again, as Maggie says, look at the roads, you know. So we might say, oh, well, we would have gotten it if we just put paving in, but then the bond is so much more expensive because, you know, because we have to pay that fee for bonding. So I think it's difficult, these are, you know, these are not as large amounts in an $18 million budget, maybe 17 million.
Yeah, I mean, only, only total's 320, so.
So it's, I mean, it's not that they're, it's not that they're small, no, they're not, and there's certainly, we're bringing them to your attention because they're not tiny, but there are things that need to be done, and we do want this facility to be maintained properly, and we want it to be that destination high school. We have, you know, newer, shinier high schools next door to us in both directions, and we want to make sure that our high school is kept well and presents well, and is that destination high school that people will want to come to. It's, you know, we have the academics, we have a great staff, we have great administration, great school board, but we want to make sure our facility is maintained and keeps up with the, these STEM labs are very important for our program.
Well, I understand the importance of all this, I get that, that's not the question. I think the question is how do we fund it, you know, one way or another.
Right, and, yes, and I would recommend that we would have a lot of difficulty in bonding these items. If you wanted to put them on a separate warrant article, that's a very different thing than bonding if you feel you want it to, because that does not require that 50% or 60% bar. So that could be an issue, you might want to say, okay, do we want to do, to do it that way?
If we do do it that way, does that mean that these numbers come out of the proposed budget then?
They would come out of the budget and they would go on to a warrant article, any one of those. If you have a no on those, then, because you pulled it out specifically, and if the voters vote no, then you may not do it, even if you find money elsewhere, because no means no. And I'm not being smart, I mean, that's, because that's the law.
I get it.
Yeah.
Dave?
So Betty, what would your preference be? I mean, I voiced the idea that if you have them in a warrant article, they do not increase the default budget amount for subsequent years. And that's, you know, I think that that's a benefit really to the taxpayer. But if you put it in the budget, they do increase the base amount in reality, and then in subsequent years, they don't come-
But once it's, once you, so once you have, you know, passed it, then it becomes a part of your operating budget-
Right.
-once the warrant article passes.
Yeah, but you, but it doesn't include, doesn't account, I thought it did not accrue to the next year's default budget.
So, so we would only be doing this one year anyway? I'm not really, I'm not following really.
There's no follow-on.
It would be-
There's no follow-on expenditure, expenditures.
It would be expended, so it's-
Right, so, yeah.
Spent and gone.
But if it's in budget, it just increases the amount of budget for the next year, and I mean, it would require us to remind you, or remind your successor or somebody, that you would take that out of the budget, because it's not, it doesn't automatically come out of the calculation for the default.
Well, it would if you're doing the default calculation.
Yes.
So you wouldn't-
I thought it didn't take, come out of the default calculation.
No, it does, any one-time expenditure does.
Yep.
Okay.
Jeanie?
You know, it's something for us all to think about, there's a couple of different philosophies on budgeting, and, you know, the town uses the philosophy that you pull every single item out and have the voters vote on it, which means that you have a three-page ballot, and most people don't have a clue what they're voting on, or you have faith in the people who are developing the budget, that they have done their homework, and that they feel so strongly about the importance of having these things done, that they include it in the budget. So there's, there's two different philosophies, and we just have to figure out which one works for us.
Steve?
So I must have dozed off one year because I didn't know we had a seasonal facilities technician or half of one, and now we're going to have less of half of one.
Yes.
What is that?
Betty might have the historical perspective a little bit more about when we needed to really work on resurrecting the grounds, et cetera. We added, we got rid of a .5?
We had, we had it in there, and what happened was is we felt we actually could, we have had someone who we hire in the summer to help us with the fields and grounds. So, and a few years ago, if you'll notice, if you look at the historical, you'll see that we actually eliminated that position a couple of years ago, but found that we were not in a position to keep our grounds, we just didn't have them in the shape, and so we had to go back. And the other piece of it was the work that the PPC did this year, and if you'll recall, we, we had our facilities people divided into indoor and outdoor, so when we really needed things to be done outdoors, and, you know, the priority in the spring, you might want to bring really more than just one person, you might want to bring three, four, or five people outside and get something done, we couldn't do that. So the PPC work that we did in this latest contract, which separately, you know, which allowed those people to now be in one employee grouping, and now we can really, we're able to more efficiently allocate our staff to where they're needed. So that's a big part of it. We feel that we'll be okay now. We did it prematurely, we reduced by that half, and it was premature, we had to put it back in, but we feel that now we can not have to have that seasonal purpose because of the way that we can allocate our staff.
And that's with the seasonal, the facilities technician is just a new title we gave. Well, actually, an example of what I alluded to earlier, Betty just mentioned to some degree, is a few years ago, we looked, we had an inside and an outside supervisor, so we folded that into one position, and through training and new hiring practices, everybody's a facility technician, so we need you outside, we need you inside, we can deploy differently as opposed to people were hired inside and people were hired for outside, we were able to, you know, create those deficiencies, you know, efficiencies by looking at job descriptions, a little training, and so that's an example of it.
It's sort of like I was saying about, about Rob, getting the people in place with the dual certifications. Now, we had that in place, we could cut that position now.
So it's not just counting on the snow.
That too.
Yeah, yeah, we were hoping for less snow.
But there's no issue last year, we looked at the overtime, we looked at our winter that we had last year and the overtime for snow removals. So we addressed that working group and, you know, to look at flexible hours, so instead of paying overtime for snow, somebody will come in and their work time will be from, you know.
But some of that is to the city, right, to the town?
Right, but what we're, you know, for, there's responsibilities-
There's lots that's not.
Right. So instead of overtime, come in, somebody will, will just shift the hours, so your day will be, you know, 3:30 a.m. to, you know, whatever, and we, you know, were able to look at, you know, just that flexibility and, believe it or not, somebody's out there who would much rather work those time periods, so just another little slight example of, you know, looking at every area that we can be more efficient in.
Because we have a common, we have AMS over there, and we have, you know, the roads over there, and the roads over here, and sidewalks between the two, who takes care of them?
We do our sidewalks, and we do, we do all the sidewalks, and I'm not sure to what degree the parking area, we might help, but I know the town comes in to do certain areas. But for what we're responsible for, you know, with the winter that we had, that was pretty significant, so we just upgraded a little bit of equipment and some flexible hours, and we'll be able to, you know, reduce some overtime. John and Jim might be able to literally map out where the lines of the marking are, who's responsible for what.
Right, and we do pay a share of the town's bill for that.
Dave?
The, the combination of the 4% that you're proposing this year, plus the future years you talked about, Betty talked about some additional things that the Budget Study Committee recommended, or will recommend, or will implement, I'm sorry, will implement. Will that march us, you know, closer to the 10% coalition school recommendations?
And I think, I think it's-
Can we get there, I guess is the question.
Right, right, and I, and I think it should very, very much do that, but, but the big number is that divisor. but the big number is that divisor, you know, what will our enrollment be?
Right.
So it's important, you know, our academics are important, our reputation is important, our, everything is important in this, to bring in the students, to have the great high school with the great facility, and also to be looking at how we can operate efficiently.
But we have a forecast on that divisor.
Oh, we have a forecast, yes.
I don't know what it's going to be exactly, of course, and nobody does, really. But.
Well, there are game changers in that kind of thing, David. For an example, if we have kindergarten implemented in this town next year, that will make a difference on the type of family that decides to move into the town. So those kinds of things can change, you know, a lot of things. So, you know, we don't know what the game changers are, but there are, obviously, there can be. So, and I think one of the game changers is how well this, we are gaining national acclaim with our work in the PACE program. We, you know, this is a very big deal for Sauhigan. So that is attracting people to our high school as well, and that's another game changer. So, you know, I'm not sure, we, yes, we have our, and we have not, we haven't deviated from taking our enrollment and just simply promoting the students. But that's not necessarily the way our enrollment comes about. We have lots of move-ins, move-outs, and we're not sure how that will go, of course.
And I would add that technology improvements can make a huge difference in that.
To have that.
That can be a great, a big game changer in terms of enrollments and things like that. So I acknowledge all that.
Yes.
It's just that, I mean, the tools are there to get, from what I can see, the tools are there to get us to, I don't know if I agree with Maggie's ten percent, by the way, but, you know, that's neither here nor there. The way she kept it, I'm not sure I necessarily agree with that, but. So there is some ten percent number of something that you can get.
And I'm not agreeing, you know, I know what you were saying, David. I think the schools we would look at would be more like the Oyster River School, those schools, yes.
Right, so we can debate that.
Yeah, and she said she, that wasn't, she wasn't up her which schools we would use.
So it just seems to me that there's a way to get there.
Yes, I believe.
And it'd just be nice to know how that would, how that would work out, and what the other missing elements that are not in the, in these costs that relate to the Budget Study Committee. Some of the changes are actually very, not revolutionary, but very, not very interesting. That's not public, right?
Well, no, well, in particular, the negotiation.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I won't go into that. But anyway, the point is that there are some things that can get us there, and I just want to make sure that we're trying to head in that direction, that we have a guideline in what we're trying to get to.
Yeah, I think that's part of the reason we formed that Budget Study Committee, you know, along with just the overall reduction in our cost per pupil, and being able to take a look year-round. I mean, it's hard to just fit it into these, you know, few months and have a good handle on everything in our budget, and how we compare to other districts, and where we want to go. And it's not just our own comparison to other districts, because we don't necessarily aspire to be another district, which I know you're not saying, but, but, you know, it's good to have a benchmark of where we are.
Right.
And that was, you know, that was a big part of the reason we formed that Budget Study Committee. So, I think we've got a good handle on it. Between that and the recommendations we made that Rob came back with, as you know, like the three, four, or five percent, and so, yeah, I think we're definitely getting there, and Jeannie, I know.
I'm sorry, I just, maybe it's going to happen tonight, but I'm just wondering, you know, how the Budget Study Committee has met with Rob and Betty, and we've seen what three and four and five percent look like in great detail. Is the rest of the board going to get exposed to that?
Well, we had talked about doing it in non-public last month, because it involved personnel, obviously. And I don't know if we're going to do it in non-public or not, I don't know if Rob brought, because, you know, last month kind of ended where Rob had to leave. So, I don't know if that's the plan to do it tonight, honestly, Jeannie, because we didn't talk about the non-public, but, right, we saw the red, green, yellow, where, you know, red would be, wow, this is going to really impact student learning.
Right.
The yellow being, okay, this is going to have a short-term, at the very least, impact, but not so detrimental. And the green being, yeah, we think that we can make these cuts and not have them impact culture or learning. And I think where Rob came in is somewhere in between the green and yellow that I just described.
I understand that, I just, I just think it's very informative for the rest of the board members to see that process and the detail.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just don't know when that's going to happen, and it needs to happen before we meet with our individual.
Yeah, which is next week, right?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if you're prepared, Rob, with the details.
I think when we put this forward, so we did go to four percent on this budget. So, and cut a lot of staff in order to do it. So I think a lot of that, instead of the, really what the Budget Study Committee saw, I think we, when we ended up looking at the budget and actually formulating it, we kind of went a little different direction. We thought, we can get there to four percent, we don't have to stop at three. And so when we did that, then we looked at all of the staffing that, you know, that would get us there. And we put in certain things in the budget, such as the paving and the storage. Now, if you remove those, you're going to get yourself to the five percent, really. So those items, so you can take those items out to get to the five percent, and I think really that, that whole, we didn't feel we had to rely on that model.
I just really, really think the detail in the process that you use to get to that point is essential to share with the rest of the board members. I really, really do. Because, you know, I under, even the public, they can't see the detail, but sometimes the public doesn't understand that the budget that you arrive at, you know, in its final version, has had many, many iterations. You know, it's not as if you just rubber stamped what came before you. There's been a lot of work that has gone in to coming to even this point, and I would hate for the rest of the board not to be a part of that.
Just see the analysis, you mean, that would add to it, yeah.
It's also, I mean, that was the directive of the board, too. So for them to be able to look at what you did, even though you sort of presented that, that middle ground.
Yeah, sure, I would come about mostly the personnel part of it. Absolutely, I would just need, if, I'm assuming none.
Non-public, absolutely.
I would just need a minute to.
Run down and get it.
Well, send it, I'd go down and send it to you.
Yeah.
Call it up, and, sure.
That'd be great.
Well, and you remember that was on the agenda last month, but, you know, for personal reasons, Rob didn't have him leave. It was not because he didn't want to share it with the rest of the board, so.
Oh, I know that, I just wasn't sure when that was going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's good to remind us, because it wasn't something we talked about as far as having it in non-public this month, so, so, yeah, okay. So, any other questions for Betty or Rob on this section of the budget? And is there any, only because I heard, you know, in particular, PIM, is there any discussion, or does anybody want to bring anything up as to how we handle the paving, storage, lab, and masonry costs? Or is everybody comfortable with it being in the budget? You know, and again, PIM in particular, you brought up, you know, the warrant article or bonding, or the difference, you know, so I guess I didn't know if there's any further discussion anybody wanted to have on that.
Sure. If you pull those items out, Betty mentioned that we'd be at the five percent level, right? To me, that if we do that, that shows a, you know, and we'll hopefully get into this analysis that we just talked about, that Rob and others show how to get down to their four percent. But if we get down to five percent, and it shows the public that we are being diligent towards reducing our budget, and to make it more in line with where we need it to be, in the direction we want it to go. And then, I think to Maggie's point, we sell the reasons why we need these other things. And bonding, I don't think is maybe not the right way to do it, but if we do it via a warrant article, we have to sell the public the reasons why we want those items. And may, and, I don't know, but I'm just kind of thinking out loud, maybe if we show that, you know, we're going, I suppose there's different ways to look at it, right? But if we go to a minus five percent on the budget, and ask for another $320,000 over here for a few other items, people might say, well, if you just put them together, you're going to be at your four percent, you know, it's just, but they might be willing to say, that's okay, because you're showing that you're really working hard to get the budget lower. And so here's a, you know, a bone, so you can get these other important things done. Of course, that could, you know, that could go the wrong way, too, obviously, so.
So, so anything that you do pull out and put onto a warrant article? You know, so for example, if you do pull out the STEM labs and put them on a warrant article, then, and then it's voted down, then we cannot do those, because that would fall under the no means no, so.
Yeah, and I understand that, too, but I think, as you mentioned several times, we don't want to make this a destination high school, right? So, that is a huge value to the community. And if people, you know, we need to sell it, right? So if people don't get that, then we either A, haven't done our job selling it, or B, they don't understand, you know, what that means to the community, so.
Any other thoughts on that? Do you guys have questions, or?
I have questions and comments.
Okay. I, you know, how about questions, because I, right now, I think the board kind of needs to discuss, so I think that if you have a question, then, then great, Maggie?
I have a question on the six hundred thousand. I, the assumptions, it was, we started with six hundred thousand. What will we get for the six hundred thousand? Is that the whole thing re paved, is that still only a section? What is the total?
No, the six hundred thousand is all the paving that needs, needs to be redone. It will cover, cover all of that.
It will cover everything.
Yeah, but I believe.
What, how long do you think that pays in the last?
But I actually believe at this point, as Steve pointed out, the petroleum products are so much more reduced. We probably can get that all done now for four hundred and fifty. So that's why we put the one fifty instead of two hundred.
But what I'm saying is, that's another reason, you just gave another reason why to do it all at once. Because petroleum costs are down, we should pave like crazy now, while it's cheaper.
Okay, let's stick to questions, though.
No, but I just wanted to know what the scope was, and what would be the useful life of that asset? How long do you think it's going to last?
Well, what we have is 25 years, it's not as useful as it used to be, but it's 25 years old now.
So anything new with last?
It would be 20, it would be 20 years.
But 10 years ago, we said we needed to replace, so it's, so it's more than fifteen.
The school's 22 years old, and we've been needing to replace it for a while, so 20 might be stretching it.
I think it was 25. It was opened in 92.
Yeah, 92, so we're looking at FY '17, that's 25 years of that pavement being there.
Frank, you had a question?
Yeah, I have, key statistics slide.
Yes.
So, just in FY '19, we spent seventeen three sixty-three. Just so I'm sure I understand the concept.
Oops, my key stuff, sorry. Oh, here it is, yeah.
Okay, so it's the second from the left, or second on the right, okay. So that's what we spent this time here. And the cost per pupil is based on that number? So the seventeen nine sixty-eight is based on?
Loosely based on that number. It's not that number, no.
So just to point out, so seventeen three sixty-three, eight hundred and forty-two students in that school. So this coming year, we're proposing a budget that's something like eighteen. So the budget actual is about a million dollars more. No, no, the total budget, I'm just, it says total expenditures, and I'm comparing that to the total budget, and that's what I wanted to say two slides later. Oh, no, it is, I apologize, it's seventeen. So, the budget proposal is $300,000 more than we actually spent this year. And with a decreased population, you're going to drive your cost per pupil up, if you just understand that.
I followed, yeah.
Is that seventeen three sixty-three, including warrant articles?
That's everything, that's everything we spent. That's, and so includes capital items, everything, not included in your cost per pupil. So you're going to see, and so the money for the paving, for the, for the storage, for the STEM labs, all of those items would not be included in the cost per pupil.
My two question?
So, may I have some, so, something, you mean, I hear the capital issues. Don't mind doing the capital issues. You ought to be asking for $200,000 every single year to maintain this building. I believe that's your core responsibility, to have an operating fund for maintenance, to do the STEM labs, and every year you ask for it, and it's in there. And then you don't have to come and ask, and you tell people what you're doing it for. But to think that you can operate a business like this and not have to continue to refurbish it, every single year something's going to come up, and every once in a while, something bigger's going to come up. And you ought to be asking that, and not be going to dick and dime and ask, or, you know, approve this warrant article, this, that. But if it's a big one, yeah, you ought to, because, you know, if I'm going to be here another few, four, or five years, now why should I pay for something that's going to be fifteen or 20 years old? I'm going to build a new addition, that ought to be amortized. But this, you know, these operational expenses, absolutely, have a budget. You know, and the same is true of middle school.
Yeah, and if you keep the budget flat, then we're not going to see the difference in our taxes.
Set aside a reserve fund, and so, you know, this is it. You know, and it missed all the things that would be charged to that, because, you know, it's silly. They should get done, absolutely should get done. And that's part of what I think I expect you to go do, and I expect we have to spend money for that.
My two question?
I have two quick ones. All of the town organizations send representatives to a capital improvements planning effort every year. And there are guidelines that everyone agrees to. You know, a one-time kind of thing, under, under a certain number, put it in your operating budget. Something that has maybe two, three-year shelf life, over fifty or seventy-five thousand dollars, you have two free capital reserves, and it's funded that way, and then you go all the way up into the bonding. And the reason Sauhigan and ASD and the town gets together is because if you don't coordinate those kinds of stents, right? You whack the taxpayer with a million dollar money in a sort of an unplanned way. So the whole idea is to get people together, talk these things through, figure out, like, bonding $600,000, what year will you do that and go forward? And it's a, it's a discussion and a negotiation, so you leave it out, the tax rate for, you know, citizens. So you guys participated in that, right? ASD participates, the town participates. But it sounds like you're just sitting here now arbitrarily deciding, let's do it this way. So my question is, what did you talk about when you participated in CIP about these things?
Well, there, yeah.
Actually, I think Steve has.
Those, that, the paving's on, yeah, it's on the CIP, it's in there.
It's on the CIP.
And the storage is there, yeah.
And it's on there as a, essentially a warrant. It's a, it's an operating expense on it, so a warrant type business.
So if it was in the plan, now, now are you doing something different?
No.
No?
No, we're consistent, except dropping it by 50,000. Maggie's saying do something different.
Yeah, it was, we had that in there at $200,000.
We also have thresholds, when he was talking about capitalization, that you guys are not involved.
Okay, you know what? I think the board needs to deliberate and discuss right now. I mean, you guys have had a lot of input, and we really need to discuss the budget ourselves. We understand there are different ways of approaching it, and that's why I was asking, you know, PIM in particular, or anyone else on the board, whether they had thoughts on that. So I think we're going to come back to our discussion, and then let Betty finish her presentation on the budget. So, I don't know if you, if anyone actually wants, has a comment about PIM's thoughts and ideas?
Normally, at least my recollection is, we have often, you know, sort of. Normally, at least my recollection is, we have often, you know, sort of waited to determine whether we were going to pull things out closer to the time when, when we really have to make a decision.
Because we may have other stuff.
And so I'm just wondering if, is there an urgency to make a decision tonight on whether we pull it out or not?
We haven't even met with our individual sections of budget yet, and so I think until we get, and, you know, a good example is, you know, asking Chris to go back to Jim with the questions that came up earlier. I think we need those, you know, for me, I would need to, you know, to know about what the lab reconfiguration entails before even making a decision about having it in the budget, having it in a warrant article, or either, you know, for that matter, depending on what it entails, so.
Right, because we have to believe in it, too.
Yep, I agree. So I think it's a little early, even, we don't even know if we, for instance, believe in the lab reconfiguration, or what it entails, so let's wait before we decide if it's on a warrant article or in the operating budget. Okay, Howard?
Betty, how much is in the maintenance fund?
How much?
Maintenance.
So, oh, the expendable trust?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have that in our budget assumption, just a second.
It was in the last.
I can look it up. It's right here. It's 109,000.
Okay, any other questions about this part of the budget for Betty or Rob before we move on? Steve? No? Okay. All right, Betty, do you want to go ahead then?
Yeah. The, I hope everybody will look at this very carefully, check, and check my cut and paste efforts, make sure I change every day and all of that kind of thing. So just, however, so Monday, February 1st will be our deliberative, and March 8th is voting day, and all of that should be in there consistently. So, the Article 1 is our, the election of officers. We have two members of the board for three years, one member for one year, and one, that's from Amherst, and then one member for three years from Mount Vernon. Does that feel right for, one, Pim or Howard?
Must be Howard.
Howard, okay, so just, just check my work there, make sure you're all in agreement with that. And then our first article is simply our, our operating budget, or Article 2, I should say, is our operating budget, which just looks the same every time. I just left these things blank, or highlighted the items that will be changing as we move along in the budget process, like the money part. The, and then, the Article 3, Shell Sahhegan Cooperative School District established a non-lapsing athletics revolving fund in accordance with RSA 193, 1943C, to be funded by rental and user fees from the rental of school district facilities, further to raise up to 50,000 dollars for the purpose of supporting athletic facilities. And this is a little bit confusing, because the, the town is permitted to create their revolving fund, and then not have to put a dollar amount that they are going to declare that they're putting into it. Now, all of this dollar amount will be, there'll be no tax impact, it will all be money that will be raised from rentals, so no taxpayer money for that. However, in school districts, per the attorney, we have to put an amount that we, that we would be putting up to that amount in. So I just put a good high amount of 50,000 dollars, we can all go out there and hustle and rent our fields out, get that up to 50,000 dollars. So that's the piece where we have, and later on tonight, we do have the lease agreement addendum that we have, that will allow us to, to receive money from the town that we will be putting into that revolving fund.
Betty?
Yeah.
Does that, does that stay static for the, forever, that 50,000 dollar number?
No, it's, it's one year, so we would, I, the way I understand it, each year, we would have to declare how much money we will be putting into that, and how much money we will be spending out. In this particular instance, the 50,000 dollars we're raising, but we're not expending any, because we don't expect to expend any.
Right, right.
We could put that we would expend some, and then not expend it, and that might be a thing that we want to do, and I'll talk further with the attorney about it. But we might want to do that in case there was some reason we'd put money in, and for some field maintenance issue, we would want to take it out, it would be an option that would be there.
Okay, what I'm afraid of is if you put a static number in there, and then after 20, 30 years or something, they're replacing the, you know, the, the stuff, that it becomes way too little.
Yeah.
But it's not a static number, okay?
No. Pim?
So, yeah, so, one of my questions was, we'd see this every year.
Yes.
And then my second question, is it possible to change wording such that it's to be funded solely by the rental? And so, in other words, when taxpayers are reading this, they're like, okay, you know, and, I mean, I know you're going to have, there are no tax impact, but when they read that it's not on at all.
And I think it probably would be fine to put that in. The fact that we say that it will be funded by rental and user fees from the rental of school district facilities actually means that we can only put rental and user fees in there. But I think just to be, yes, I understand what you're saying, it would be, it would give more confidence to the taxpayers. That is all that's going in there, no tax, no taxpayer money.
And that's for all facilities, correct?
Yeah.
Including the school and?
The auditorium?
The, the supporting athletics facilities.
Athletic facilities. Auditorium's not athletic. All right, okay, didn't read that.
Well, it's athletic facility, so whatever you determine is an athletic facility, that would be what you, you would be supporting with this.
Jeanne?
Where does it say there's no tax impact?
I was going to ask.
Well, it doesn't yet.
It doesn't yet.
None of that is determined yet, but I, I'm pretty sure when I put the estimated tax impact is an increase, well, I have the increase, I'm pretty sure we'll just instead say no tax impact yet. But these articles were just written.
Okay, I just don't want to forget, because the average person is going to see this and go, oh my God, we're going to raise 50,000 dollars, and I'm going to say no, because I don't, you know.
We'll put no tax impact.
Thank you.
For sure. We won't argue over this one.
We'll yellow out those two lines, then, Betty.
What? Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah, those are just, you know, it's a template, and I just yellow the things that I need to change, so.
I, because when you use cut and paste, it can be your friend, but it can be your enemy too.
And we use enemy.
Yeah. And then Article 4, so the Sahhegan Cooperative School District will raise an appropriate up to 65,000 dollars from year-end undesignated fund balance. And this is pretty much about paving, so.
Should we increase this?
Yeah, well, I don't know. Frank says yes, so. So, yeah, I don't know, the, the amount of money that you would want to put in there, but that I did want, yes, to put money in there, because our, as I said, we need to get this stuff paved, there's no question about it, we can't Band-Aid it any longer, it's done.
I think this is the first look, like we talked about, if we want to increase it, next time after we've met with the individual committees, we'll talk about increasing it.
And who's on this, this committee?
Buildings and grounds, Chris.
So, one of my questions would be, can we do it in stages?
To jump?
You do the, the front half, and then the back half?
And that's what we're proposing, because it, it would be three stages, the way we're proposing it, 150,000 this year, 150 next, and 100. But, but in the meantime, trying to put money into the, into the fund, the expendable trust fund, so that maybe it's not always, you know, as much on the taxpayer.
Right.
And I think, can we go, Steve, sorry, go ahead.
We could take a page from last year, too, because we can do a piece of it as we did with the track.
And Steve, what, just so we all know, what part of the budget are you on?
That's an excellent question. I didn't, I didn't know there'd be a quiz. Technology, it's technology.
And foundations and grounds, I'm on administration.
Food and transportation.
Transportation.
Good.
And curriculum.
And athletics.
Athletics, okay, so, if any of the questions, you know, and again, we can email each other and ask, who, who's on athletics again, but, so we can direct questions, but obviously there's going to be a few for Chris, so, okay. Any more, Betty?
And that's all the warrant articles that we're looking at right now.
Okay. All right, any more questions on the warrant articles? And again, we do review them again next month and commit changes still. All set? Okay. All right, so, at this time, I would like to ask Dwayne Purvis and Penn Diambrosio, who are the co-chairs of the Sahhegan Advisory Finance Committee, to introduce their committee members, and maybe you guys could say also, if you've decided, which part of the budget you are going to be on?
First of all, we have the members from Mount Vernon, Ian Congrin, and Jane King. Could you raise your hand, Jane?
Hello?
And for Amherst is Sue Burchard, I believe she was here, Lisa Eastland, Beth Kuzma.
Hi, Beth.
Ken Diambrosio, co-chair, and myself, co-chair.
Okay.
Comments at this time regarding the budget? I don't have any comments at this time, and I don't know if anyone else has.
Have you guys decided which sections of the budget?
We, we have, I don't have that.
Okay, okay.
Actually, hang on a second. Hang on a second. Yes, that, that has been done. Do you have it, Betty?
I, the most, I might.
Yeah.
That's okay, I just thought it'd be, yeah.
We know, we know where we're on, yes.
Betty? Yes, I do have that.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Transportation.
Oh, you have it.
Facilities.
Well, because I couldn't carry the whole.
Do you want to read that off, Betty?
You have the microphone.
Do you want? I'll let Mary Lou read it, she can.
I was really just, I just thought we could put a face with a name, if we, you know, so we knew who was. But, okay, so, from the committee, Dan Corcoran is going to be on administration, Beth Kuzma is special education, Jane King is facilities, Sue Burchard is school nutrition and transportation, Dwayne is on curriculum, Ken is on technology, and Lisa Eastland is on athletics. Okay, great, thank, and thank you guys, first of all, for volunteering. It's, we know it's a lot of time, and so we really appreciate you guys volunteering for this and putting the time in.
All right, now, I said I didn't have any comments, did I?
Okay, great, we'll see you next month. Okay. And also, in the future, we're going to, you know, because, and for those of you who don't know, we break up the budget into sections like we just said, and we meet with administrator and other pertinent people within the building or SAU to discuss each part of the budget. And so we are going to ask this year for comments from the administration, as well as comments from the Sahhegan Advisory Finance Committee at each meeting. Okay, information, you guys got the law regarding student representatives at board meetings, and the reason we put that in there is because our previous student representative wanted to be a full-fledged board member and sit at the table, and, and there is a law saying that they can do that, and have all the rights of board members, except voting rights. I'm not sure that most students have the time to do that, or the desire, they're long meetings sometimes, and they would not be a part of non-public either, so, but if the situation, or if the thought does come up again, it's something that we would need to vote on, that's why that was included in there.
Can I just ask a question about that? If it does come up again, it does state that it, I believe they have to be elected by the student body, and currently it's community council, does that, does that suffice?
We thought that it did, if, if other board members think that it needs to be the whole student body, we can discuss that, because I think this is our policy. We thought that because they're elected to community council, and then elected to that position, but if it comes up and other board members have other ideas, you know, or don't agree with that, then we can certainly discuss it at the time.
No, I was just curious as to whether that, that would work.
Yeah. Okay, so, action items, the recreation lease addendum that Betty mentioned earlier, and we've all had a chance to look at that, so hopefully everybody's read it, and has, if you have any questions or comments, you know, we'll take them now.
Yeah, so what, what this lease does is simply that the, the parties acknowledge that the town maintains the Amherst School District facilities, and that Sahhegan Cooperative School District maintains its own facilities. So, and in recognition, in recognition of this commencing on July 1, 2016, the town shall reimburse the Sahhegan School District for field maintenance in an amount equal to 85% of the monies the town collects from user fees and revenues from rental of all Sahhegan facilities. And then the, the rental fee will be paid to the town on a, on a seasonal basis. And it also stipulates that we'll collaborate to establish hourly rates for the rental of the stadium, and the town shall be responsible for setting user fees and rental rates.
So everyone had a chance to read that, right, and is familiar with it? Any questions or further comments? No?
It has, it has, I see. I was just saying, it's already gone to the Amherst Board, as well as the town, so both of those bodies, which are the three bodies, are party to the lease.
So we would need to vote on that tonight, as long as everybody agreed with it.
I will, will you?
Okay, a second? Okay, Steve, Howard seconds. Any further discussion on that? Steve, are you pondering something?
No.
No?
I'm waiting for you to say, all in favor.
Oh, okay. All right, no, if no further discussion, all in favor? All right, unanimous? Great. That, again, I'll reiterate that we're very thankful to the three bodies working together to make this happen. And, and I didn't say this last time, but it would not have happened without Betty's hard work making this happen, so thank you very much, Betty.
Oh, thanks.
Well, no, really, this is very important. All right, and policies is the next action item. We've only got really, actually, one policy that we're going to be on tonight, because the ethics policy is going to be brought to the SAU, so we had it, yeah, yeah, on Tuesday, so we had a chance to read it, and it was sent to us via email, so if you have any questions, you know, you have a chance to.
I just want a clarification. Staff ethics or the board ethics?
Board ethics.
Okay, because the staff ethics, that was in by mistake, or, oh, okay. Okay, I thought we were relooking at that, okay.
Yeah, no, the board ethics, but it's going to be adopted and revised by all three, so, yeah. But there's, oh, sorry, Jean?
I was going to say, I, we did work on it in the policy committee, and I just wanted to, we're really not going to talk about it tonight, but if you could just read it with these things in mind, when it goes before the SAU Board.
Yeah.
The number 14 is actually, I don't know if you guys have it in front of you. It was sent by, by Mary Ann, a couple, there we go. Is this the newer, the newest one?
Let's dig it up. If it has 14 items in there.
It has 14 items.
Scroll down, see.
Yeah, 14 is, just needs to be altered, the tail end of it, to reflect.
It should read, work with the board, with other board members to establish effective board policies, and to delegate authority to the administration of the schools, to the.
Superintendent.
To the superintendent of schools.
Right. So that one was just, it was, it was one of the ones that, remember, Peter, that I had altered, and we needed to go back to the old version, so that one needs to be changed. The other thing that I just wanted to point out is that we, the original had a statement in it, in number three, that said, make decisions only after full discussion at public board meetings, render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment. We took out, and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that we decided that, that sentence stood alone without that piece of it, and accomplished the same thing. The other thing is, just to consider whether we want to formally review it annually somehow, review the, the ethics policy. So that will just. So, that will just be part of the discussion at the SAU Board meeting.
Did you guys talk about new board members reviewing it, the very least, or?
Yeah.
We did.
We actually talked about it. Being presented on all of our boards. April meeting. New board members, beginning of a new year after the election. And we would do that every year so that everyone would have that opportunity to read through and ask questions. That's on a yearly basis.
Right. Great, thank you.
I apologize for 14.
That's okay.
So, what I did was, the 14, we took from the other page. I just asked Mary Ann to type that in, so that's what happened.
It's okay.
We'll get that right. For Tuesday, right?
And in policy, DGA, not a huge change, not a huge policy, but it was in our packet. So, are there any questions on that before we take a motion? That was on the authorized signatures. No? Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I can explain what it is, the reason for it, if you want to know.
Sure, I already know, but I guess, yeah, I think only the policy committee does.
So, pre-numbered checks, which we used to always have. And, and if we had to pre-print it, they should be pre-numbered. But now that we are no longer pre-printing, we have our own micro printers. If you recall, we threw those at the last, I think, budget last year. So, we have our own printers and now, as our check stock is running out, then we would like to start purchasing the, those checks that we had planned to, which will be a good money saver. And it's a different kind of security issue when you have checks that are already printed. Then you do need to pre-number it, but since you're not going to, you don't want that, no. And that, and can't have it. There's nothing on the check stock.
Are there two DGA policies or, what is it? Why am I seeing two?
I, I, you know what I did? I, so I just asked Mary Ann, I said, here's, here's what I want you to do. Right there.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Gotcha.
It'll be four and after.
Yeah. Four and after, exactly.
Overachiever.
Take off, pre-numbered, and yeah.
Yeah. Steve?
So, I, I happened to discuss this policy with the treasurer today. And she was surprised by it and wanted to talk to somebody else about it. So, I would ask that we call this a first reading and not vote on it tonight.
Okay. Did you refer her to Betty?
I did.
I believe she has something in my email, but I, as you know, because I did return your calls, I was pretty much leaving.
Yeah, you're in, yeah. Busy all day. Okay. I, I agree with that, Steve. But any questions? We will have a second reading next month. Any questions until then? No? Okay. All right, we'll call this the first reading and I'll put it on the agenda for next month. Okay. We're going to actually hold off on the field trip because we're going to wait for more information on that. We just realized that we needed, so we're going to wait and ask if we can do that in December also. If that's okay, Pete?
Pierre, we apologize. I want to share that information with you just before you go.
Yeah. Okay. So, for December meeting, meeting agenda items so far, I have the Spain field trip. I have the policy DGA. I have the leave totals that Rob is going to provide us another link to. I have the community council decision on credits for academic support. And of course, the budget discussions and information. So, I'll send that out via email again, but if you guys have any other ideas right now.
I found it handy when you did that, when you sent it out.
Okay, good, good.
The ethics policy should be on there as well.
Yeah, after we go to the SAU, okay? Okay?
Which one?
All right. All right, anything else that people can think of? And again, I'll send the email off, but I just didn't know. Yeah, Dave? Did you have something, Dave?
Yeah, did you want to put the Courtney Banghart thing in?
Yeah, I actually already had that written down, yeah.
All right, okay, fine.
And actually, I was thinking of maybe mentioning it tonight when Rob wrote the letter from the alumni because Dave received another real positive letter from an alumni, Courtney Banghart, which everybody, I'm sure, now, a lot of people probably have heard of. And Dave knows personally, but she was glad to hear that Dave was on the Sahhegan Board. And she said, "I'm glad to hear you're giving back," I think were her words, is in particular, in particular to Sahhegan because it did so much for me and my classmates. And she's, Courtney's the one that, that coached at Dartmouth, is now at Princeton, has won three titles at Princeton. Five titles at Princeton for basketball. She's the head basketball coach. Five Ivy League titles, so.
She also, she's voted in as one of the top 50, most powerful.
I'll send you the.
In Fortune, Fortune magazine.
Yeah. Yeah, and here she is thanking Sahhegan High School. So, that, that's pretty cool. And Dave.
But I asked her to come and speak to us.
We talked about it before.
And affect the student body. So, at some point, we need to discuss, we should discuss that and see if we want to make that happen.
Steve?
So, just to circle back to the field trip. Dave had an idea that he sort of whizzed by me quickly last week. And I don't know if you want to suggest that to the board.
Which idea was that?
It's about parents participating. So, do you want?
Just the thought was that when we do our review, that we invite the parents of the kids, the prospective students that will be going. They can come and join us and ask questions and, you know, so they get an idea of what the process is for approving it. And they participate in that process as well, which in a way is a way of thinking about sharing the responsibility for this.
Yeah. I did forward your comments and ideas to Pete. So, maybe next week, or next month, when we approve or when we talk about approving field trips, including the Spain one, we can have that discussion at that time.
We were going to hold that up to February. You want to talk about that?
Oh, well, Steve brought it up. I don't know.
Whenever it is, if we're going to talk about the Spain trip and.
Well, I don't know if you have.
Well, yeah. That's something that Dave and I talked about too, but I didn't expect it to be brought up tonight. We, we did talk about putting, he was saying there was really no rush and since we're in budget season now and we have a lot of other things going on that we talk about in February, but, you know.
But I like the idea of doing it for at least as a temporary thing, maybe Peter can.
Yeah, I'd want to get input from Peter as well. Sometimes we don't even have the students that we know are going on the trip.
Well, that's what I was thinking, so we wouldn't have any parents associated with them.
At least that's the way it's supposed to work.
Which is a great order.
Yes.
Great order.
All right, but, but we'll still keep it in mind for February just because it could, you know, we could look at the policy and maybe incorporate something in the policy even or on the field trip form that Pete gets from the staff members. All right, so that brings our regular meeting to a close. We do have some non-public issues that the Board has to discuss, so.
A motion going to non-public?
Okay. Second?
So, you want to state that you're going into non-public session under 91A, column 3? Which letter, A, B, and C, for personnel and reputation?
Bye. Thank you, guys, for coming.